None of this idling around.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we're good.
Well, we're good until we get to case one, but I guess.
Well, that's Dan's problem.
Okay, let's bring this meeting to order. If someone could put some semblance of a flag up, I'd enjoy that.
I have one, hold on.
It's on top of things as always.
Um, Mark, can you let me share my screen?
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Nice job.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
In greetings. Have we had a chance in the blink of an eye to look at our minutes?
I thought I just saw it down there, it's Danny.
Any comments on the minutes? Not much to comment on. In the future, Mark, can we flush these out a little bit? I'm sure we said something.
Uh, yep, I agree.
And I'm definitely into being very simple, but that goes beyond it.
Yep.
Um. We're gonna skip right to our conceptual.
Um, well, Dan's here, so.
Dan's here. Conceptual is fine, I'm gonna be here anyways, let them go.
We may as well do Dan, he's here and got that first, got the first case, so.
I'm gonna have to turn some sound off a little bit here, there we go. In the public hearings, PB 2020, semicolon, zero five, proposed lot line relocation between two adjoining properties. Owner applicant Kyle Carson and Holt Funeral Home Incorporated, 19 Hall Avenue and 100 Western Avenue. Map two, lot 160A and 160B in the Residential Valley Zone RV, application. Could you, um, Dan, give us a little narrative on this project, please?
Sure, so Kyle Carson owns the lot, did fronts on Western Ave. And Steve Carson, his father, owns the whole funeral home on Hall Ave. There's a, uh, there's a weird little angle point in the back. The cursor was just there. So there's a weird little angle point where the shed to be removed is. And, um, they're basically just looking to straighten that out as much as they can. Um, they wanted to make it perfectly straight, but we couldn't because we wouldn't meet zoning, um, if we did that with the setback, so we made it as straight as we could. They want to put up a fence to separate the funeral home from the residence. And they wanted to put it along the property line and make it straighter, so they proposed to, um, adjust the lot line in such a fashion. It's kind of a weird little yank that it had there anyway, um, so they wanted to just get it straightened out. Pretty basic thing.
Sounds that. So is is the border on Western Avenue, the monument on Western Avenue, the same?
Yep, that's the one you see there by the telephone, or, um, it's a, yeah, it's kind of by the telephone pole, it's poking up in their yard.
So it only changes right at that hinge?
Yeah, so that, yeah, the one in the front staying the same, the hinge point is staying the same, and then we're just bending it over, um, by the shed, so it's really just that, that small little triangle.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I don't know if I have to recuse myself because Holt Funeral Home is my client.
I would say not. Um, so the shed in question obviously is too close to that boundary when you moved it, is that being removed?
Yeah, they're gonna move it, uh, so that it meets the, uh, the setback, so it'll get moved down to about where it says to be in the lot line to be eliminated, so they're gonna slide it down. Right now, the shed is on the, um, the funeral home property and the, um, the existing house uses it, so they're just gonna move it so that it's, um, within the setback on the, um, the property of Kyle.
Is the, and will the shed be moved before I see the Mylar, or is this, um, in the future?
Uh, in theory, it's in the future because you'll probably see the Mylar tomorrow, but if it needs to be moved before you see it, we can certainly accommodate that.
If you could just give us a rough idea on when that will be moved.
Sure.
In the minutes, that would cover it.
Okay, I'll be talking with the, uh, my clients tomorrow, um, to get the, uh, the plan signed, and I'll discuss that with them.
Mark, any comment?
Um, we need to, uh, the board needs to accept the application as a first step.
Okay, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the application.
I'll start, yeah.
Ryan, would you come in on this? Yes or no?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan, you've recused yourself, and I am positive, yes. So I would say it passed unanimously.
So as far as the plan itself, this is a few items that, um, need to be cleaned up that, um, set this, set this pin at the, at the angle. Um, add a stamp, stamp and sign the plan, owner's signature. Um, the note for the, uh, signature of the planning board chair, uh, notes an old date that needs to be cleaned up, and add the water line.
Yeah, so I've taken, I've taken care of all that, and I'll get the signatures, um, tomorrow from the, uh, the clients. I wanted to wait until after the meeting before I had them sign and date it. And I set that pin on the, on the angle point as well. So all that's taken care of.
And you have a notation about moving the shed, Mark?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that'd be the other comment that, um, that Dan needs to get back to us on, so, right.
Now, again, my opinion of this whole thing is, is, and everybody's heard it for pretty close to eight years, if, if two people can get along and make a decision, I, I'm not here to find fault with it. It looks quite straightforward with those, if we could just add, you know, a note in about, about when the building will be moved. And, uh, seems fine with me, all monuments are set?
Yes.
Yeah, the missing pin was at that angle point.
Yeah, yeah, I said it when I was out there, I just didn't, I didn't add it to the plan.
We, we need a motion to, um, accept the plan with notations.
Well, actually, we, uh, we should open this up to the public if there is any. But we have to go through the formality.
Yeah, have to open up the public hearing, I don't know if there's, there's some people online here, I don't know if they're here for this or another case, the other case, but if you have any questions, please identify yourself and ask away. I don't see anybody, Mr. Chairman.
I would say that is a no, so we will close the public. And now, Scott.
Make a motion to accept the lot line adjustment as proposed with notations.
I'll second it.
Uh, those in favor, Ryan?
Uh, yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
And I accept it, so I would say it's unanimous. On to the next one. PB 2020, semicolon, zero six, proposed conceptual consultation. Site plan being submitted under Article Three of Site Plan Review Regulations. Proposal involves the construction of a 7,700 square foot venue facility and associated parking on a 174 acre property, applicant is Mark Fusco. Two, 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 six, Ware Road, map one, lots seven forty-four A and seven forty-three, zoned REC one.
Get this plan up here. So, um, this is a conceptual, just, just for, um, clarification, this is a conceptual meeting hearing, um, is not a public hearing. Um, so we, um, the board does not have to, uh, accept public input, um, as a conceptual hearing under the statute. Um, we're allowed to talk about, you know, general thoughts and, and issues and concerns that the applicant should bring back to the board, uh, with a more specific plan, and we can get into the weeds. So tonight, if we could stay general, um, and give the applicant, um, some ideas of, of any sort of studies or additional details you'd want to see on the plan, uh, when they come back formally, um, just to keep it, uh, within the parameters of what a conceptual is supposed to be all about. So I believe Jen, Jen's online here, and she's representing the applicant tonight.
Dean, before we get into this one, I did some work on this property for a previous owner, years gone by, I don't see it an issue, but I just figured I'd let you know that before we get into it.
Very good.
I'm in a butter.
Heidi, I think, uh, in the past, when we've been involved with this, we, if you're in a butter, we've recused ourselves. But I don't know if it would be, Mark, I need your input on whether it's necessary at this conceptual meeting.
Um, yeah, because it technically, she, um, her family isn't a butter to the site, so, um, obviously, the, the board has an option to allow the public to speak, but as an a butter, she, she should recuse herself.
Now, just to be clear, Heidi, um, the, even though you're recused and sitting in the audience, if we're having a crowded agenda that evening, um, you know, when it's open to the public, by God, stand up, I mean, and say what you want to say, I mean, that's what it's all about.
Oh, absolutely.
When it goes to that point, we're gonna be notified as a butters anyway.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, she doesn't, the, you know, as in a butter, they don't lose their voice, it's just a different voice, so, absolutely.
I've been in that situation several, several times since I've been on. Um, Jen, could you, uh, give us a quick walkthrough of this and, and how it originated and thought process behind it and such?
Sure, what I'd like to do is, uh, Mike Colburn, who's representing Mark Fusco, um, to kind of give you a little bit of the background on how we got here.
You guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hey, sorry, I can't get my video to work. I, uh, I have no idea what I'm doing with the video part of it, but as long as you can hear me, and I can hear you guys, I'm fine. Um, yeah, so I, I thought I'd just give you a little background here and how we got to this point and how we got to, to Mark purchasing this property, um. So to start off, I, I just want to say for those of you that I don't know, my, my name's Michael Colburn. Mark and I are business partners at Lake Shore Village Resort on Horace Lake in Ware. Uh, we own 20 homes with a clubhouse and amenities, and we are open year round. The bulk of our business comes from mid-May to late October. We host 16 weddings during the spring and fall seasons. Summertime, uh, we have families renting our homes weekly through July and August. Weddings for 2021 are sold out already, and 22 are 50% sold out. So we've been doing destination weddings now for eight years. Typically, wedding couples and their guests, uh, come on a Friday night and stay for two nights. Sunday morning, we serve them a nice pancake breakfast on the beach, and off they go at noon. We've, uh, we've always talked about adding another wedding venue. And we just haven't been able to really find the right property yet until we came across this piece of land. Uh, Mark purchased the property a couple of months ago, and we look forward to, you know, adding this mountain top venue and working with all of you to achieve this. Um, we anticipate that this will be a wedding-only venue, meaning we are not anticipating hosting guests hotel-style overnight. And the couple and their guests will come and go, uh, same day. So I just wanted to give you that little brief intro. Maybe Mark Fusco has a couple of things to say, I think he's on the line as well.
Yeah, I'm on the line, uh. I, I would just add, although I haven't met all of you, uh, I've been up in the neighborhood on Cranny Hill, on the top of Cranny Hill for, with my wife for just over 20 years. Starting with, uh, the old Morse Farm and, um, you know, continuing to enjoy the area over that time with, uh, with our family. I got involved with Lake Shore Village Resort right after the financial crisis in, oh, nine or 10 or so, I think we've been in this about nine years now. Uh, doing it, it's been a lot of fun. Um, and it's, this isn't my primary business, I do other things, but, um, I really, when I found out about, about this property, as Michael said, we were interested in maybe extending and doing some more things. Uh, when I got and took a look at the property, it's, as the crow flies down a dirt road, it's about a mile from my barn, uh, and my thought was maybe we could do something with it, uh, as a wedding venue and event space, uh, to expand our business, uh, but it also is a very nice piece of land, uh, which would be good for riding horses and, you know, general things for my family, so, you know, we live in the neighborhood, and, uh, although we don't access the property from the backside, we, it's from, uh, from 114, um, it's in our neighborhood, I ride my horses up in the back there, and it's, uh, sort of a nice space, so, uh, we like it, and, you know, we, my wife and I, we'd like to keep it that way, although, um, this venue, you know, will help pay for some things, but it's not the primary driver of actually why we bought it. We've been buying land around us for 20 years, and, um, we sort of like it up, uh, our neck of the woods up on Cranny Hill with lots of open space, we do keep our land open, most of it for for riding and, um, dirt bikes and things, but, um, we sort of like it up that way, thanks.
Thank you.
So to get to the nuts and bolts of the plan, um, the property is located, it's basically the third driveway on the left as you're coming from Ware on Route 114. Um, it's a fairly good-sized driveway, it's shared between the lot for the venue and there's an existing home down by 114. Um, driveway now is probably somewhere between 14 to 16 feet wide. Um, the location of it, where it connects to Ware Road is the, um,
We're right in the midst of a zoning.
And there's a culvert, um,
I'll have Mark send you the link.
Um, so our plan is to upgrade that road to 20 feet wide, we'd like to keep it gravel, except for an apron down at 114. Um, and bring the road up to basically the top of the hill and put the venue in there, it's going to be maximum of 200, um, seat venue, which we don't expect to ever get to that many people, it's probably gonna be closer to 100, 150. But with the way things are going right now, with COVID and all, more space, the better. Um, you've all seen how, you know, Pat's Peak has expanded because they just need more room, it's not that they have more people. Um, as far as the parking that you see there, um, the number of parking spaces that the town requires is, um, much lower than what we would like to see. We were looking at one space per every three seats plus an additional five for employees, and then you can see on the left side of the building, we've put in a, um, loading area, loading zone, it was not a loading dock, it's just an area for the caterers to come in and to be able to unload and, um, you know, if the bride and groom or whoever have additional decoration-type people who want to come in and put things in. Um, a nice, uh, cul-de-sac type area for dropping people off. Um, it's, you know, we, if you go up there, you'll know why they want to put it up there, the view is incredible. It's really pretty. Um, that area by the previous owner has been regraded, so the topo lines there aren't really accurate, and we have a surveyor going out to get that information for us. Uh, the previous owner also put in the road going up, which we've had the wetlands done. And we have some wetland work to work out with DES. Um, and also going up there, you can see that there's some really flat spots in the road, and then all of a sudden it's steep, we'd be regrading those areas out to make it more of a gentle grade. Um, so what, I, I know that, um, usually you wait until you have the plans to do a site walk. Um, I, they're basically thinking of just having this as a three-season event. Um, I'd rather have you go up fairly soon to be able to go see it, um, if that can be done before we submit the final plans, because we've got quite a bit of work to do. Um, it will be on a well and septic. Um, but uh, we will be getting an alteration of terrain permit for it. We will be getting a Hampshire DOT driveway permit off of 114 and a septic permit. So, um, that's really all I have for right now, if you guys have questions, concerns, I'd more than happy to answer them or try.
Thank you, Jen. Um, not to interrupt, but Mark, could you send, uh, Bill a link?
Bill Marco?
Yes, please. He's been calling feverishly here.
Dean, I have one question for Jen, what, what are you doing for power?
Um, it would come up from 114.
And what, what is the proposed building going to be, is it just going to be a open pavilion, or is it gonna be a, you know, three-season enclosed building?
It's gonna be an enclosed building.
Okay, thank you.
Jen, just as, uh, to back up the train a little bit and get to our line of thought is, uh, number one, I mean, we're all a little gun-shy after being on the planning board for a while. Uh, weddings, agritourism, I mean, we've got a lot of key words that we can't talk about, and, um, you know, I just, um, I just implore to you that, that everything be spot-on. So that we have firm ground to stand on, you know, for our decision. And, um, there's nothing we can do about the history, but I'm sure that if we have all our ducks in a row and put a checkmark in the proper boxes, and we're confident with it, it will be fine, so there, there might be some things that, that crop up that but, I mean, generally, the whole concept from a planning board point of view, and from my, I can only speak for myself when, with some of this being opinion, but I don't see any kids going to school here, I don't see a school bus going up that driveway. I don't see questionable roads. And, um, the neighbors, well, we'll deal with them as we get into this project further. But, um, you know, it, it, um, just a few notes to put, you know, on the brimmy I had to look at, that it, uh, it is a controversial subject.
This use is permitted in the zone here, it's different because it's a commercial recreational zone, so it's actually permitted by right here. There's no, uh, there's no agritourism or anything of that, it's straight up, good to go.
You and I are very aware of that, and, but the things that get muted, you know, once you get, it comes back to you in, in, you know, within the town, you, you, you sit there and scratch your head until it bleeds, trying to figure out where that came from. And, uh, we're still being blamed for some wedding venues that can't take place. And if you look into the history and the minutes the planning board gave, uh, full, full permission for them to do it, and it was the court that shut it down, well, I don't know any of us that are on the Superior Court in Concord, but, you know, we're getting blamed for it. And we're big people, we just shrug our shoulders and move on, but I mean, it, that doesn't mean some of this doesn't get lost in the fog. It, it's a wonderful location, I've deer hunted through there for, for years when I was younger and could move, you know, now if I can't see the house, I don't go. But, um, you know, it was a beautiful layout of land, and of course, been through it several times because I was in the timber business, and that's what we did. And, um, it, it should be awesome, I, I've thought for a million years that it was a beautiful place for, uh, a hotel or a bread and breakfast up there. You know, the shining too has to come from somewhere. It could come from there, but you know, and, and, and I really don't have any questions for you, Jen, at this point, other than, um, you know, permits and things such as that, you know them well, Mark knows them well. And, and go from there, but it, uh, there's power already up there, isn't there, Jen?
Um, just to the house.
It doesn't go beyond there?
No.
Like, Michael, does, it doesn't go beyond there, does it?
It does not, just, just to the house.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, just double checking.
Yeah.
I've also spent a lot of time up in that area, on that piece of land, it's a beautiful spot for what they're looking to do. And I think, you know, hats off for doing it the right way, they've got, you know, Jen on board, and they're trying to submit permitting and doing the things they're supposed to do, opposed to, um, just having at it on their own. I think as long as they come in and we walk through the steps, I don't see it being an issue as long as we do our job thoroughly.
Any other comments from board members or questions?
We've also been proactive and gone around and met the neighbors so that this was not a surprise to anyone, which I highly respect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Demar, can I speak?
You certainly can, Keith.
Um, I just, one question, does, is this property and the venue accessible from Cranny Pond Road?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and just one other thing that I didn't say is that the left side of where the building is, is the, um, zone line between the CR one and the R one, um, but the neighbor who owns that land is Mark. And it, if, when and if you get out there, you'll see, when you're standing there, um, right behind the, uh, property line, the land goes up substantially. So it, there's nothing that can really be easily built in that area. And, and again, it's Mark's land, the owner of this property.
It goes up like 40 or 50 feet, Jen, pretty quick.
Yeah, it does.
Well, it's a nice piece of land to walk down to 114, but I don't advise it the other way. It's quite the trudge.
I think, Jen, when you come back, you know, having an idea of hours of operation will be important, especially, you know, with time, things are gonna shut down at night, it's always an issue noise.
I think two of that can come from both directions, Mark, you know, we can simply, uh, I think two of that can come from both directions, Mark. You know, we can simply give her a list of, of requirements and things such as that. And, and we all have the freedom to defy and do as we please. But I mean, it usually ends up biting you pretty good. But it.
I know. I, I think the big advantage with this applicant is what you're going to see is that they have an established business on Horse Lake with neighbors that are very close by. So they know those lessons. They know the lessons of keeping the music turned down. 10 o'clock's a great time to shut everything down so that you don't get into those troubles. You know, just keeping your guests under control and whatnot. Like I said, they have a very successful business on Horse Lake. And so it's not a newbie coming in who doesn't know what they're doing. So I think it's going to be, yes, I mean, you know, you can have lists on the plan of what the, what you guys want and that's fine. And this applicant's going to be like, yeah, sure. And that's what's going to happen.
It's also limited use. It's not a continuous use day after day.
No, no. We're looking at weekends during three seasons.
What, what is preventing it from being an operation day after day for the three seasons? That was, I'm sorry, this is Keith.
It's, it's being proposed as a wedding venue. And I mean, I can have Mark or Michael speak to it, but they don't want it to be anything more than that at this point.
Yeah, at this point, weekends are the only time we'll host these weddings here on this property. We find here at the resort that during the midweek, and obviously not many people are getting married during the midweek. So just like in Pat's speaking, they define most of their events are on the weekends for all of their weddings that they do. So, so that's about it. It'll, it'll be a weekend, you know, event for sure.
Even if they wanted to rent it out for birthday parties or retirement party or something, it's an ideal, ideal location. And, you know, oftentimes that's an afternoon venue.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great spot for it.
We could do some corporate things. And we've done some corporate things with, with Mark's. He has some ties to a couple of companies in Boston that we've had up to the resort during the midweek and have been pretty successful with that. I could perhaps envision something like that going on in the future. Just, you know, having a couple of days with, with a company there at that particular facility and then perhaps staying here at our resort. But again, that's something down the road that, you know, we'll look at.
Again, this is Keith. I'm not opposed to the day-to-day operations. I just heard that it's not allowed to have a day, day-to-day operation. And I was wondering what prevented it from being that?
Why is it not allowed? It's a commercial zone.
I agree. I, I heard somebody, and I can't say who it was. I was just listening. Someone said it's not a day-to-day, a day-to-day operation is not allowed. It's going to be a three-season wedding venue for the weekend. I agree with you. It should be operate, allowed.
Right. We're not, we're not looking to restrict it to only weekends. This is Jen Port. We're looking, you know, but right now we're just setting it up to be weekends. It may, and we would set the hours of operation, which would apply to any day of the week that it would be running.
I'm in agreeance with you.
When do you see the paperwork coming forth, Jen? Formally application?
I, probably in over a month, only because we have sub consultants that it's almost winter and they're straight out and we're just trying to get them out there. It's been a belt. We're swamped. I know that. So probably a month to six weeks, I would think.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to do a site walk, it'd be good to be able to get up there before the snow flies. And, you know, if we wait to the end of November, we might be in a pickle if we wait till the 25th. So I wonder if you want to, if you want to do a site walk and the board wants to do a site walk, we should probably pick a Saturday that works for people and take a ride.
That would be fine with me. That would be fine. I mean, we, I can, just thinking through this, you know, from living in Henniker in this area most of my life, you know, I can see some problems that could arise, you know, vandalism, cases of beer bottles on the sides of the road. But that's not our business. That's, you know, that's up to whoever is running the venue to police it themselves. But I mean, that's not part of what we're looking at. But it, you can find a problem with everything if you scratch your head long enough. But it, it just looks, again, from my point of view, a wonderful use of the land. And, you know, that doesn't involve more kids in school and this, that and the other to, to where it's, it's, you know, actually Henniker would never see any money out of it. You know, this is just a, a good use of the land. Any other comments, questions?
When the application, when the application comes in, the board's going to have to make a determination of regional impact, given the location close to Ware. If that determination is made, as, as in a butter, the town of Ware would be notified along with the Regional Planning Commission. But that, that would only take place at the application stage.
Very good.
Not, not quite clear, Mark, why we'd have to do that.
You don't have to do it. It's something that you'll have to consider, given its location on the border with Ware. I mean, the Ware residents are going to get notified, obviously, along the southern side. But, you know.
Yeah, it's usually common courtesy, especially if it's right on that border that you notify the, the next town over. And Central Regional Planning Commission likes to be notified just in case. It is a large project, but a project of this size, I don't know if they'd have any interest in.
Considering that we have a regional high school just down the street closer to the Ware town line or on the Ware side, I don't see that is. And then back to the road, there's a caretaker's house at the gateway to that property with someone in it. I, I wouldn't think that there'd be a lot of intrusion when there's not venues going on.
Alan, they may choose to gate it as well.
It, it is gated now.
Yes.
This is Mark. It is gated and that home has someone who works with us at the resort. He and his girlfriend and the dog live there to keep an eye on things.
Any other comments, questions?
Do you, do you want to do a site, a site walk, Dean?
Yes, any, anytime you can set one up, just so we get enough to put some eyeballs to it, we'll go do it. I'm looking for an afternoon out. I don't know about the rest of it.
I have walked the property for the last 20 years. And I'm going to have to excuse myself from the site walk. I'm going to be out for about the next six weeks.
Scott, I don't think major surgery is a good excuse.
Well, that's what I'm sticking with.
Yeah, I know. We didn't, we didn't even expect to see you at the meeting, so.
You won't tomorrow.
So you're not on the mend?
No, no. Surgery's tomorrow at noon time.
Ooh. Now, everybody kneel beside your bed tonight. If there's no other questions or comments, I think we're pretty well done here, Jen, and thank you.
You want to pick a date since we got everybody corralled here?
Well, we're supposed to, we got a good chance of having some snow, I guess. What, Friday?
Friday.
Yeah. This, this weekend may, isn't going to work. But how about, how about November 7?
I believe November 7, the Board of Selectmen has a all-day budget hearing. But if somebody can just take photos or something, then I'll just look at those.
Any other problems with the 7?
Good with me.
I would be, I would be fine with that. I haven't looked at the deer hunting schedule, but you know, if I'm looking out in the woods out the window, you know what I'm doing.
Well, we just need to post that officially because it is considered a meeting. I suppose we can meet down at the driveway, Mark, Matt, and then Mark and we can all, Jen, and we can drive up together or separately or whatever, figure that out when we get there.
Would you guys like one of us to be there with you? Because I'm actually out of town on the 7. And I don't know if Mark is around, but I, we're heading out to visit our oldest daughter in Seattle for a few days to, to see her. And I mean, I could certainly make the 14th. I hope that's a better day for everybody.
I can make it. I'm happy to be there.
Perfect.
Does that work? Did that date work for you, Jen?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
And if necessary to you, we can always arrange another walk if you want to actually go up there.
Okay.
We can figure that out.
I think it's helpful that quite a few of the members are already familiar with the property as well.
Great.
What time?
What time do you think, Dean? Eight, nine?
Nine's pushing it, but you know, us people that are retired, you know, there's really good TV on in the morning.
Sackoons are on Saturday mornings.
I'd go for 10. So now you can ignore me and we'll see you at 9.
Half the day's over at 10.
Yeah.
I'd rather go earlier.
Nine.
See what happens? Why'd you even ask me?
It could be eight. It could be eight.
Heidi, I've got a few things I'd like to say, but not over the, not over the pewter.
Eight's fine too. I don't care.
Nine is fine. I like nine.
Oh, man, get out of bed.
If I had woken up everybody, every time I went to the woods for my whole lifetime, I would let you get away with prodding me out, but I didn't. Is that the last order to deal with this?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Okay, let's move on.
Great.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Colburn, Mr. Fescue.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. The only other thing left there is, you know, it's zoning season. And just a couple of things. One, this issue came up last year and it actually involves the zone we were just talking about, the CR zones, about allowing additional uses in those areas, light industrial and commercial services technical, to expand the use options down there, allow more flexibility in that neighborhood. So I just want to get your thoughts on that. We don't have to decide tonight, but we're going to have hearings. We have to start in December. And then this morning I sent you all a number of documents from the town administrator, having to do with citations and housing standards and building, building code, adopting building code for the town. It's something that's been discussed for a while. Joe's put together a, a subcommittee and Jen's on it. Chris, Chris is on it. Heidi's on it. Mark, Keaton, Bill Marco. So it's something that we should talk about at the next meeting. It's, it's a pretty big document. It has a lot of advantages. Obviously, it's not without controversy in Henniker. Anytime you talk about having a, a building code with inspections, you know, it, it causes questions to be raised. So, you know, maybe at the next meeting, Joe's willing to join in on the call. One advantage of going this route is we would be able to adopt some housing standards, which given the condition of a number of multifamily units we have in town, it would certainly help try to deal with those, those issues. But that's for the next meeting. We can, we can talk, talk about them in more detail.
Our first meeting is Friday morning, by the way.
Right.
Of that team.
So there could be more insight by our next meeting.
I'm sure. Oh, yeah, we're going to have several meetings before our next meeting, I'm sure.
Any thoughts on expanding the uses in the CR zone?
I, I don't see any issue at all. Be, I really think that that's basically what's going to happen anyway on that stretch down there. I mean, you figure this is the, the first inclination of, you know, this wedding venue thing has been the only thing that's happened on 114 since as long as I can remember. You know, I, I don't think it's anything that this is something that's holding people back because I think they would have come to us and asked for exemption anyway. But if it's something that can incite a few people that there's a hurdle they don't have to jump over, I think we should remove the hurdle. And if it's, if it's an area that they want to do something with, we'd do the same thing if they threw a proposal to us. So I, I don't see any negative aspect of, of opening it up. You know, we, we've been open to just about anything that they wanted to do down on that section of road.
Yep.
Any other opinions?
I think it sounds like a good opportunity for that piece of land that's been in front of the town for quite a while.
Do we still have a working economic development committee?
With the COVID bill, we, that sort of got stuck in the backburn and actually Chris and I had a conversation a few weeks ago about that. And he does want to start having meetings again after the first of the year. So.
Okay. That might be too late for us. But I mean, that, that's, that, that would seem like a committee that could weigh in on this.
This is Keith. The, the amendment is for all CI districts. Not amendment, but we're talking about amending allowable uses in all CI districts, not just the area down on 114.
Well, the, down on 114, Keith, it's CR and CR1. There's, there's actually two districts down there.
Okay.
So it would, it would be.
What are you saying? Is there any other CR districts?
No. It's just the south of downtown.
You know, we had already discussed north on 114 for quite an extended period here years ago to, you know, more or less to determine that it's just, why would we bother talking one moment about that when we've got south, which is actually very nice land compared to up there? And left it at that. I mean, it, it's kind of one of those things you wonder why it wasn't done before. I mean, if I was on a, on an economics development committee, that would be one of the things that I would be jumping on was getting it opened up. So you don't, you don't have to blockade people very hard before they, they stop even looking at you, you know? And if, we can get the point across that we're receptive to these people, I think it would, it would be money well spent. But that's my personal opinion. Any other thing anyone would like Ryan, we're concerned about you on whether or not.
No, I, I agree with you, Dean. I think it's, it sounds like a brilliant idea, so.
Now put the popcorn away and pay attention. No, I mean, it, it, Mark and I had talked about it here the other day and I, it was kind of like, it isn't already. You know, I don't, I don't go to bed with a Bible and sit there and look at all of this all the time, you know? But it, it looks like a very good idea to me. And whatever we've got to do to push it along, Mark, feel free.
All right. I would suggest we, we hold our meeting in November on the 11th, the 25th, the day before Thanksgiving. I think a lot of people may be tied up. So for November, I suggest we do that. We can talk about zoning. I don't have any applications. I don't have any applications, um, but we can certainly talk about the building code and any progress that the groups has on that. I can write up a section on, on this issue and obviously anything else anybody has to say. Um, it is Veterans Day, but, um.
Any comment on that day?
I think that's fine.
Yeah, fine with me.
Did you say that was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving? That's two Wednesdays.
The, the twenty-fifth is, is, we've been meeting the last Wednesday of the month, Bill. So that would be the day before Thanksgiving, the twenty-fifth. And so I'm suggesting we meet on the eleventh instead.
I got you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree with that.
And I think it would, um, probably be, uh, another Zoom meeting. I think with COVID rearing its ugly head again a little bit, you know, we could more or less plan on that.
So we, we're going to meet in two weeks instead, like, why not push it to the eighteenth and meet three weeks out?
I have the ZBA meeting that night. The first one this year, Tia.
Six thirty, Mark?
Yeah.
Would you send the invitation link out so we don't have to go searching for it, please?
Uh, yes. Moving forward, when you get your email, the link will be there and then below it will be any notes. And attached to that will be any, you know, plans or anything like that. So it's not, it's going to be a lot more simple for everybody.
Okay.
I saw the link in my mail and then it disappeared.
Yeah, well.
And I don't know how that's capable of doing that, other than, uh, you know, my email account lives out on Gmail. Does it, isn't it, does it expire?
No, but it can, it can get lost, though.
I don't, I don't understand where it just went, gone.
Cyber monkeys.
Cyber monkey, yeah. Cause I, yeah, so moving forward, you'll, you'll get the link. It'll be the first thing on the email. And then below it will be any notes and, and there'll be attachments. Um, I don't want anybody having to go hunt. You shouldn't have to hunt for the, the damn link.
Was, uh, I obviously got, uh, was there a reason it wasn't on the website?
It's on the website. It's, it's. If you go to the, if you go to the agenda, it's on the second page of the agenda, Bill.
Off the website?
Yeah, you go to the website, you go to playing board meeting, shows the agenda on the second page is the link. It's a two-page.
Mark, when you do the agenda, if you can just put the link on the top, that's how a lot of other towns have done it.
Yeah, that will, that will prevent all people playing with a little wheel on their mouse.
Okay, I see it now.
Yeah.
All right.
No, the link should be at top like Tia said.
Anything else that we need to cover?
Good luck tomorrow, Scott.
Thank you.
All the best.
Yes, Scott.
Thank you.
My mother was still alive, Scott. You would be on her daily, um, prayer list until all your hair fall out. She left the task to me. All I can say is I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, people. It's good to see your faces and talk to you for a minute and, uh, keep up the good work. Uh, Mark, do you want to bring up anything about solar, just as a hint out there?
Oh, sure. Um.
Let me do it. Let me do it. Um, we were discussing a commercial solar installation at the Oak Coin Farm, if you remember here. Oh, it must be almost a year and a half ago.
Yeah, for a while.
And apparently they're getting their act together and have a rather noted engineer that is going to send us a proposal. So instead of something being a dead issue that we thought we had moving along, we seem to, uh, be really good at accepting all kinds of things and encouraging people. And then they walk away and forget all about us, but apparently this will be a reality. And, and that will be our first commercial installation in Hennecker. So it, I'm excited. I don't know about the rest of you, but.
Excited.
Be something to look forward to, see what we can sculpt around. But it, um, it certainly is an area that's, um, let's put it indigenous to it because, I mean, God, you can't see it from anywhere. You know, it, uh, it isn't in anybody's face, but we'll find out.
Some good tax revenue and virtually no impact on anything, so.
Yeah.
Just remember, that's the region where people have, we're up in arms over moving roads, so you still may have controversy.
Oh, I'm expect that, Heidi.
Very good. Well, thank you, people. I guess you can pull the point.
Mark, uh, Mark, way to review the Zoom meeting, the, the first part that I missed?
You're breaking up, Bill, I'm sorry.
Is there a way to, to the first part of the Zoom meeting after we sign off?
Review it.
Oh, it's recorded. Um, I don't know if I can get to it today, but, um, we basically, Dan went over his, the, the lot line relocation plan at the funeral home.
Yeah, I understand what was on the agenda. I was just, to, um, sit a discussion. I mean, it's public record anyways, right?
Well, absolutely. Yeah. I just, I don't know where the recording goes. So you can certainly call the office in the morning and we, and if you have a problem not getting it, let me know.
I think once we're done with this meeting, you can go right in on your, your Zoom profile and you can fetch it right from there.
Is that true, Tia?
Tia? I ha- I have in the past, any, a meeting I missed that I wanted to, I've gone right to Zoom and go through the town in the meeting and who it's with and click on it. And it will either tell you it's live or recorded and you can watch the recording.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor, Ryan?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Dan, is he still with us?
Yes.
And I will most certainly shut this off and continue with my life.
All right, we'll see you on the seventh. Stay well.
Yeah, thank you.